My name is Brian Haggerty. I'm the Board of Trustees Chairman of the Board, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Anyone at home would like to listen in on your Internet, you can go to www.youtube.com/GoEPPCC. Before we get started, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Okay. All right, Bill, do the call to order, please.
Mr. Exer.
Here.
Mrs. Robles.
Here.
Ms. Nahera.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Mrs. Moy.
Here.
Mr. Haggerty.
Here.
Dr. Graham will not be joining us at today's meeting. Item 1.4, Approval of Minutes, there is none. Item 1.5, Welcome to Guests and Staff Members. Item 1.6, Open Forum, there is none. Section 1.7, Presentations by Individuals, Groups, and Organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will recognize individuals who have retired from El Paso Community College.
Chair Haggerty and members of the Board, these are always bittersweet moments for the college staff and I. We will actually be recognizing more retirees than we have board members present this evening. Again, always bittersweet, very happy for our retirees, but bittersweet for the college as a whole. We're going to start with Ms. Sandra Campbell. Ms. Campbell has been an instructor at El Paso Community College since August 1993. For her first 19 years, she served as a part-time accounting instructor, teaching evening and weekend courses while simultaneously working full-time during the day with the Internal Revenue Service. In February 2012, Ms. Campbell joined EPCC as a full-time faculty member, continuing to teach accounting and tax law. Her extensive experience as an IRS revenue agent allowed her to bring real-world application, credibility, and practical insights into the classroom. She earned a bachelor's degree in accounting in 1993 and a master's degree in accounting with an emphasis in taxation in 2000, both from UTEP. Ms. Campbell retired from the Internal Revenue Service in January 2007, went on to establish her own tax business, which has served families throughout the El Paso community for the past 19 tax seasons. Upon her retirement from the IRS, she was granted the status of enrolled agent. In January 2018, she played a key role in launching a Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, or VITA, site at EPCC's Valle Verde campus. Sponsored by the IRS and the Government Employees Credit Union, the VITA program provided free tax preparation services to EPCC employees and students. Ms. Campbell's spring semester tax students served as volunteers, gaining valuable hands-on experience while supporting the college community. Many of Ms. Campbell's former students have gone on to become certified public accountants, while others have earned bachelor's and master's degrees in accounting and now teach part-time for the college. An enduring testament to her influence as an educator and mentor. For more than 30 years, Ms. Campbell has generously shared her expertise, passion, and commitment to student success. Thank you, Professor Campbell, for your exceptional service to EPCC and for making a lasting difference in the lives of our students. We wish you a fulfilling and well-deserved retirement. She's retiring from El Paso Community College after more than 25 years of dedicated service, Ms. Campbell, if you can come up. (applause) including over 21 years as a full-time Veterans Affairs Financial Aid Specialist. Since joining EPCC in 2000, she has been a steady and compassionate presence for student veterans and their families. In her role, she guided students through the VA certification process, interpreted complex regulations, reviewed essential documentation, and supported Hazelwood Act applicants with exceptional care and precision. Her deep expertise, attention to detail, and calm, solutions-oriented approach helped countless veterans transition from military service to higher education. Her commitment to service extended well beyond her daily responsibilities. She served on the Board of the National Association of Veterans Program Administrators, contributed to the college's Green Campus Committee, and completed EPCC's two-year Leadership Development Program. Over the years, she has earned multiple awards honoring her professionalism, teamwork, and unwavering dedication to student success. Colleagues and students describe her as compassionate, reliable, and thorough, someone who consistently went the extra mile and took great pride in helping students begin their EPCC journey and celebrating with them when they completed it. Outside of work, she enjoys reading and spending time with her family. In retirement, she looks forward to focusing on her health, enjoying time with loved ones, and fulfilling a lifelong dream of traveling to Italy. Thank you, Ms. Leon Guerreiro, for your decades of exceptional service, dedication, and genuine care. She's made a lasting impact on EPCC and on the many veterans she has supported throughout her career. We wish her health, joy, and wonderful adventures in this next chapter. She extends her heartfelt thanks to her colleagues for their support, kindness, and friendship throughout her career. Her leadership, professionalism, and devotion to students leave a meaningful legacy at the college. Ms. Guerreiro, Leon Guerreiro, join me, please.[392.12][392.12](applause) for more than 26 years as a professor of accounting, in addition to several years of part-time teaching before joining the full-time faculty. Altogether, his 30 years of service reflect an unwavering dedication to student success and to the mission of the college. During his tenure, Ms. Gonzalez taught many of the college's advanced accounting courses and became known for his excellence in teaching, mentoring, and academic leadership. He earned both his Bachelor's of Business Administration in Accounting and his Master of Accountancy from UTEP. A certified public accountant since 1996 and a Chartered Global Management Accountant, he brought substantial real-world experience to the classroom from his early work as an auditor with KPMG to his private CPA practice serving family-owned businesses throughout our community. Mr. Gonzalez's impact extended far beyond the classroom. He served for many years as the Honors Program Coordinator, inspiring high-achieving students to reach ambitious academic and professional goals. As a faculty advisor for the nationally-recognized Students in Free Enterprise, or SCIF, team, he guided students to multiple national awards and final-round competitions. He also served as the Jack Kent Cooke Undergraduate Transfer Scholarship Representative, during which three EPCC students earned this prestigious national scholarship under his mentorship. His passion for financial literacy led him to create and host Making Sense, with a C, an EPCC TV program throughout which he produced and recorded more than 80 episodes designed to help students and community members make informed financial decisions. Mr. Gonzalez has been recognized for his excellence many times, including being named a Mini Stevens Piper Award nominee and receiving the Outstanding Accounting Educator in Texas Award from the Texas Society of Certified Public Accountants. His innovation, professionalism, and dedication to student learning have left an enduring legacy at EPCC. A lifelong El Pasuan, Mr. Gonzalez also contributed to the cultural life of the college as a past member of the EPCC Mariachi Group, performing as a guitarist and singer. He and his wife, Pat, have been married for 30 years and are the proud parents of their son, Leonardo, whose educational journey began at EPCC through the Children's College and later continued through the Early College High School Program at Burgess High School. Dr. Steve Smith, Vice President of Instruction and Workforce Education, shares that Nino has helped thousands of students and has made a lasting impact on the college through both his teaching and his service beyond the classroom. He will be missed. Professor Gonzalez, thank you for your many years of committed service. We wish you all the best in your well-earned retirement. If you could join me, please.[642.66][642.66](applause) Eduardo Tomas Contreras has dedicated an extraordinary 34 years of service to the college's IT computer labs. His journey began in the fall of 1990 and spring of 1991 when he assisted with walk-in registrations and helped students navigate their way to the stations they needed. I remember arena registration. Shortly after, he learned of a part-time opportunity in the Academic Open Computer Lab at the Valle Verde Campus. Motivated and eager to grow, he completed his Associate's Degree in Microcomputer Applications in December 1992 and was hired as a part-time lab assistant. Mr. Contreras continued in that role until the Mission del Paso Campus opened in the spring of 1998, when he officially became a full-time member of the IT computer lab's team. Over the years, he has worked alongside numerous supervisors, directors, and fellow lab assistants. Through their mentorship and through his own dedication to learning, he remained current in the rapidly evolving world of technology, completing training and collaborating closely with IT staff to support students and faculty. As he looks ahead to retirement, Eduardo is excited to spend more time with family and friends and to enjoy his favorite pastime, fishing. He extends his heartfelt gratitude to all IT computer lab personnel for their unwavering support throughout his 34 years of service. Today, we proudly recognize and thank Mr. Contreras for his dedication, professionalism, and positive impact he has made on our college community. Congratulations on your well-earned retirement, and if you'll join me, please.[744.12][744.12](applause) Rounding out our retirees, Alma Aviles has been a dedicated member of the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her 50 years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso Community College family since 1995. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. She has volunteered with the Sun Bowl Association for many years, participating in the annual Sun Bowl Parade and the Tony the Tiger Sun Bowl Games. She became involved with LULAC and was deputized by the City of El Paso Elections Department registering voters at EPCC campuses and encouraging civic participation. She later served as President of LULAC Council 4875 and performance evaluations, and job descriptions. Mr. Yáñez was a key contributor to the startup team for the college's banner illusion ERP implementation in the early two thousands. His collaboration with IT, payroll, and finance helped build operational systems still relied upon today. His efforts also supported the college's work to reduce staff time-to-hire and review and improve staff salary tables, partnering closely with AVP Field and Vice President Flores. His deep institutional knowledge and steady leadership have been invaluable assets to the Human Resource Office and to the college community. He's been an active member of the Professional Staff Association and served as an officer with the College and University Professional Association for Human Resources, Coupa HR, Rio Grande Chapter. As he enters retirement, he looks forward to enjoying time with his wife, Maria, their family and friends, and taking on projects and hobbies he loves. We also celebrate this meaningful milestone for both Mr. Yáñez and his wife, Maria, who's also retiring from the college this month as well and has chosen to mark the occasion privately. We wish them a joyful and well-deserved new chapter together. The college extends its heartfelt appreciation to Mr. Yáñez for his three decades of dedicated service, leadership, and lasting contributions to EPCC. Mr. Yáñez, please. Today, we celebrate Ms. Emily Alonso, Admissions and Registration Assistant, who is retiring after more than thirty-four years of dedicated service to El Paso Community College. Ms. Alonso began her EPCC journey in nineteen eighty-six, immediately after graduating from high school, working part-time in the admissions and registration office. She grew alongside the college, later becoming a full-time employee and essential member of the commencement team. Over the decades, she supported students and staff across Mission del Paso, Valle Verde, and Trans Mountain, leaving a positive and lasting impact everywhere she went. She quickly became a cornerstone of her department. She volunteered for numerous events and committees, proudly representing EPCC at Applied Texas Intake Sessions, TACROM, Operation College Bound, and a wide range of outreach activities. She was always the first to step up and the first to arrive, dependable, loyal, and deeply committed to the college's mission. Throughout her career, she profoundly impacted the lives of countless students and colleagues through her compassion, kindness, and unwavering dedication to student success. She often said she grew up in the admissions and registration office, and she embraced every change and challenge with grace. If she did not know the answer, she made it her mission to find one, always going the extra mile to support those she served. When asked what she loved most about EPCC, she shared that it was being part of a student's entire journey, from application to crossing the stage at commencement. That simple sentiment captures exactly who she is at heart. Ms. Alonso will be deeply missed. While we are sad to see her leave, we're excited for the next chapter ahead. We know that she looks forward to spending more time with her family, traveling, and maybe even catching up on Netflix. On behalf of El Paso Community College, thank you, Ms. Alonso, for your decades of exceptional service, for your warmth, and for your unwavering commitment to our students. She leaves behind a lasting legacy, and our community is truly better because of her. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. If you'll join me, please. Rounding out our retirees, Alma Aviles has been a dedicated member of the El Paso Community College family since nineteen seventy-five. She began her service as a library clerk at the Rio Grande Campus that very year it opened, commuting back and forth to Logan Heights at Fort Bliss. She currently serves as the Public Services Supervisor at the Rio Grande Campus Library. Throughout her fifty years with EPCC, she has often shared that what she loved most about her work was that there was never a day she didn't learn something. Her rapport with students, colleagues, and employees across the district earned her tremendous respect and reflects her deep commitment to the educational process. Ms. Aviles has also been an active contributor to the El Paso community. She's volunteered with the Sun Bowl Association for many years, participating in the annual Sun Bowl Parade and the Tony the Tiger Sun Bowl Games. She became involved with LULAC and was deputized by the City of El Paso Elections Department registering voters at EPCC campuses and encouraging civic participation. She later served as President of LULAC Council forty-eight seventy-five and as a member of the board, helping provide students with educational opportunities through scholarship, support. She played an instrumental role in the selection of scholarship recipients for many years. As she concludes her remarkable five-decade career at EPCC, Ms. Aviles looks forward to focusing on her health and enjoying a well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your fifty years of extraordinary service, dedication, and commitment to our students and our college. We extend our deepest appreciation and warmest wishes in your retirement. If you'll join me, please.
Item one point seven point two. Optional presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Serrata, Vice Presidents, Administration, Faculty, and Staff. As you might already know, my name is Isaac Diaz Palma, and I currently serve as the EPCC Student Government Association President. I have been part of EPCC since two thousand twenty-three as an international student pursuing a degree in mechanical engineering, and I look forward to graduating by the end of next week and then transferring to UTEP. Mr. Luis Gonzalez will assume a role of the presidency for the spring two thousand twenty-six semester. During this sem-- thank you. During this semester, SGA has played a crucial role in improving student experience at EPCC. Today, I would like to highlight some of the most important achievements that we have accomplished during this Fall two thousand twenty-five semester. First, we extended our collaboration with other departments by not hosting one but two student panels hosted by the Campus Improvement and Progress Pillar Departments, where we discussed with faculty and staff ways on how to improve a student-centered view when making important decisions that will impact our student body, such as challenges in the syllabi and changes in campus equipment and initiatives. We also hosted our annual Fall Fest, where we collaborated along campus life and student leadership, NSO, and many other departments, as well as different clubs and organizations. This event was a total success. We managed to bring our community together and give back something while having a fun time and collecting more funds and items for the Tejano Mercado. Student organizations raised over four thousand dollars, and more than five hundred guests were in attendance. We have additionally hosted our own events, such as Drugs Are Scary, where we brought substance abuse awareness to students by bringing important resources to campus and by highlighting the ones that already exist. We also collaborated with the Consulate Department. Drugs Are Scary attracts approximately three hundred and forty students. We also hosted more friendly events like Rising Shangwe SGA at the Northwest Campus, where we helped raise SGA boys at the campus and ask our students for some feedback and initiatives that they would like to see at the Northwest Campus. Also, more recently, we hosted a Thanksgiving event at the Rio Grande and Valle Verde Campus as well to appreciate our student body. Moreover, we traveled to our Fall Texas Junior College SGA Region One Conference in Amarillo, Texas, where we, as a team, cooperated with other colleges from our region to have a sense of belonging and teamwork along with each other. We, as EPCC, managed to have two committees share positions at the Region One. Our Vice President Luis Gonzalez was appointed Chair of Resolutions Committee, and our Campus Representative, Lourdes Jiménez, was appointed Chair of the Spirit Committee. I'm also proud to say that we managed to bring SGA to our five campuses as promised at the very beginning of this semester. This is, of course, the result of hard work from all of our team and our wonderful advisors, Nari Arribas and Enrique Costa Moreno. Furthermore, I'm really thankful to everyone who has helped me to make SGA what it is today. And even though I'm leaving EPCC, I'm very confident to say that by the leadership of our advisors and our Vice President, SGA will remain doing a great impact on campus and even a better one. Thank you all for your attention. We also look forward to keep collaborating with you, so please do not hesitate to reach out. Have a wonderful evening, and thank you again for keep making EPCC the best place to start and finish. Go Tejanos. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry that the pictures were going as SGA was doing their presentation. Good evening, Chair Hagerty, members of the Board, President Serrata, staff and guests. I'm Laura Gaither, President of the Classified Staff Association. I would like to begin with a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Ivan Iníguis and his students for their continued generosity and support in making our turkey drive a success. We are thrilled to announce that thanks to the kindness of Mr. Iníguis' biology classes at the Northwest Campus, we collected a total of seventy-two turkeys this year. This marks the third time his students have contributed to our cause, and we are incredibly grateful for their thoughtfulness and willingness to help families in need. Their dedication, thoughtfulness, and continuous support make a meaningful difference in the lives of many. Their actions exemplify the spirit of giving, and we look forward to continuing this tradition in the years to come. We also collected a total of nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars in monetary donations district-wide, and with that, we were able to buy a total of seventy-two turkeys, collecting a total of a hundred and forty-four turkeys. This year, in response to the overwhelming support, we decided last minute to add a third nonprofit organization to our donations. The organizations that benefited from these contributions were Isleta Alumni Association, Pride Center, and Grace Place Community Center. The Isleta Alumni Association has a longstanding tradition of supporting the local community, and this year marks their sixth consecutive year gathering turkeys, pies, and sides for families experiencing struggles during the holiday season. Collecting names and coordinating donations are part of a meticulous process, and the help they receive ensures that every family receives a meal and feels the warmth of the community. The next organization was Pride Center. They have been developed as a comprehensive one-stop resource center in El Paso. At the Pride Center, current and former youth and foster care between the ages of sixteen and twenty-five can access a variety of services and growth opportunities as they work towards independence and self-sufficiency. The end goal is to empower these young people to fully realize their potential as they transition to adult life. The last-minute organization we donated to was Grace Place Community Center. They are a nonprofit organization who provide daily meals to the community. They have volunteers who donate food and cook warm meals to homeless individuals and families. They are open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from ten-thirty in the morning to one-thirty in the afternoon. On an average day, they serve between eighty to a hundred and twenty meals. Thanks to the generosity and contributions of our students, staff, and faculty, these organizations can continue their valuable work, providing nourishment and supporting families who might otherwise miss out on a Thanksgiving celebration. Thank you for giving hope, joy, and a sense of community during the holiday season. We did receive other monetary donations as we were distributing turkeys, so we had to return them unfortunately. We do have to stick to our deadline of ten o'clock on the day of delivery, but we do look forward to your donation next year if possible. We'd like to remind everyone, CSA will be hosting a Christmas dance on Saturday, December thirteenth, from eight to twelve midnight. We will have music, food, sweets, and gifts. Come join us all for a night of fun. Thank you for your time.
Hello, members of the Board, Mr. President, Vice Presidents, Deans, guests, who are not as many as they were a few minutes ago. Oh, well. I just want to say we had our second Senate meeting under the state-mandated rules on November seventeenth. Everything seemed to go well. Some of the technical glitches we had in our October meeting were overcome by our great IT people, and so everything went fairly smoothly. Our next meeting will be the Faculty Association meeting in January during Faculty Development Week, and then our next Senate meeting will be in February. So we'll see how things go then. Thank you. That's it.
Section one point eight, Communications. Item one point eight point one. Discussion and Review Regarding Data, Statistics, Policies, and General Information Related to El Paso Community College by the Board of Trustees.
Chair Hagerty, members of the Board, I'd like to call on Associate Vice President Blaine Primazic, who will provide a presentation on the Apex Accelerators. Please, AVP Primazic.
Thank you, Dr. Serrata. Chair Hagerty, members of the Board, today it's my pleasure to introduce you to our Contract Opportunity Center. It goes by many names, actually. Formerly, it's a procurement technical assistance center, part of a national program. In the last two years, went through a national rebranding, so they wound up with Apex Accelerator. So, many, many names. There we go. It would help for me to find this button. Oh, I did want to draw just a little bit of attention before I left the title slide. The map in the background comes from the Department of Defense, which hosts the Apex Accelerators or oversees them. You can kind of see just how important our location is to the West Texas region, and I'll point out in a second, even to Southern New Mexico as well. Not all those pins in New Mexico represent an actual Apex Accelerator. So the work that this office does, especially recognizing our Director for the Center, Pablo Armandad, is so vital for our businesses within the community, and we'll be going through some of that work and accomplishments tonight. The mission is basically to provide that technical assistance to regional businesses seeking to procure contracts with federal government agencies, state governments, local and tribal governments, local ISDs as well. And so the work of our procurement specialists within the office is working one-on-one with these businesses to procure those contracts. That translates into money invested into the community. Into the community translates into jobs created and retained for the community as well. El Paso Community College has had a very long history with the PTAC program. So, the program itself was established nationally in nineteen eighty-five. Our Contract Opportunity Center opened in nineteen eighty-six and is run continuously. And so certainly would like to recognize this Board and Dr. Serrata and all Boards previous who have provided that consistent support for the operation of this center. So our Apex Accelerator is one of ninety-eight Apex Accelerators nationally. There are actually three hundred offices. Many just host a single advisor working out of an Apex Accelerator. So in the New Mexico region, Santa Fe actually hosts the Apex Accelerator for the state. There's one advisor assigned to New Mexico, and sometimes that advisor position is not filled. And in those cases, our surrounding communities are federally designated as distressed areas, and we can reach across borders and assist any business coming to us from those distressed areas. So our actual service area is El Paso and Hudson County, as is the colleges, but we routinely take in clients from Southern New Mexico and the surrounding areas. Even a little bit of talk within the state, there's twelve counties in south of San Antonio that really don't have a service center right now, and the state is working with each of the Apex Accelerators within Texas to maybe take up some of that client workload as well from those areas. So the work that we do extends beyond the community as well. And we're part of, those ninety-eight Apex Accelerators are part of the National Apex Accelerator Alliance. So our four specialists are part of a network of five hundred specialists nationwide that support businesses. So the services that are performed, once a client comes in the door, a lot of that work really is on the counseling, technical support, and bid matching. So working with a client to get them registered into the SAM system, that's the Federal System of Awards Management, making sure that they have all the identification numbers, giving them access to all other federal agency systems, state agency systems, and teaching them how to do the bid searches. Really, bid matching becomes the important next step in that, and then the technical assort, technical support, assisting them all the way from the application for an award all the way to what happens when you've been awarded and how you begin to implement that, receive the funds, and do any reporting that might be required of that. So it's that wraparound support for our businesses. As Mr. Armandad is always reminding me, the job of the centers is really to make business owners self-sufficient. Train them, get them into the system, teach them how to utilize the system, and then very often, at that point, that business is ready to go off on their own and work their own contracts, but our center is always there to support them when they feel the need to come back, any other assistance we can provide. And we do have revolving customers as well in that way. On the marketing, doing a lot of the market research for areas outside of El Paso. Every business wants to grow, get access to federal contracts. Huge push with Department of Defense recently to focus much of our attention on DOD contracts. And then that outreach. On the Contract Opportunity Center's website here, they've already got up their April list of workshops. There's about fifteen workshops scheduled between January and the end of March, ranging everything from Contracting 101, it's those large group sessions to at least introduce them to the work that the Contract Opportunity Center can provide, all the way up to support for veterans, writing grant proposals, getting into the PIEE system, which is the payment system for the contracts, and essentially everything in between, from OSHA to cybersecurity. Two of the big events each year. So this past April, the center hosted its eighteenth Annual Procurement and Contracting Symposium, and then that's followed, just about a month ago, from our fifteenth Annual Veterans Business Conference. These two conferences hosted here in the building are really the premier networking opportunities for businesses, for agencies to come together, learn from each other. But really, we get federal agencies from four branches of the military, Fort Bliss, Holloman, the City of El Paso, the state agencies. We've also been blessed with great support, too, from our area representatives. So Senator Says Ar Blanco routinely attends these events, has been a speaker at our event. And then Congresswoman Escobar also really strong support for our Veterans Business Conference. There's always a pre-recorded message and her staff on hand to help everyone there. And also here by way of thank you to our sponsors. Every year, these events really aren't possible without sponsors like Clark Construction, El Paso Electric, The Journal, and The Women's Journal have been three very consistently strong sponsors behind that work. And so really, it's bringing everybody together to make businesses aware of what's out there and what agencies need. and what agencies need. And that all leads to accomplishments. And so here, certainly, we're talking about the Contract Opportunity Center and the support it provides, but really, these accomplishments speak to our local business owners. This is really the hard work of these entrepreneurs, all the time effort, the hours spent going after these contracts, really delivering on contracts. And so what you're seeing, some of our metrics that we report back to Department of Defense are counseling hours and job creation and contract awards. And so in the past fiscal year is what this represents. It closed at the end of this past August. Really, over 327 businesses counseled, 186 of those were new businesses, over 2,000 counseling hours. It's just, keep in mind, we have four procurement specialists. And so over 2,000 counseling hours over that time. And then that's on top of 71 training events, 39 outreach events, so they're attending every other event hosted by the city surrounding agencies. We want to be visible and part of all of those events as well. And what that translates into, you'll see up there over 1,900 contract awards in the last fiscal year, 80 subcontract awards, and together that totals a little over, nearly $563 million. And so that's all dollars invested into the community, invested in jobs within the El Paso area. And so again, certainly a great shout out to Mr. Armandades and his team, but certainly this is really recognition of the accomplishments of all of our business partners within the community. Some individual success stories? So we wanted to break this down by some great stories within each one of your areas. So Mr. Uxser, SLS CEO Limited is actually a national business. They've been involved in contracting building the border fence. And so one of the largest sets of awards there, Mr. Hagerty in the Northeast, I think Jordan Foster Construction probably needs no introduction within the community, but again, $76 million in awards. Ms. Robles, Mirador Construction Enterprises, also local, nearly $18 million in awards. Mr. Mendez, Excel Garment Manufacturing, and so another locally owned company, 46 years in business here, over $9 million in awards. Garment Manufacturing to support the armed services, but in doing a little bit of research, I found out they also do manufacturing for companies like Tommy Hilfiger, Eddie Bauer, Levi's as well. So a lot of varied work there. For Dr. Graham's Region Glacier Technologies, another national operating company, information technology-based, but just under 2 million in contracts. Mrs. Moy, Volter Electrical Construction Corp., local mechanical, electrical, and plumbing construction dedicated to medical industries and facilities. And so there again, nearly a million and a half. And then Ms. Nata Brunson's Investment, also Brunson's Pump, providing a lot of services to construction, so portable meeting spaces, portable storage facilities, portable toilets and other things that construction sites need, but over $93,000 on that first contract. And so just these seven companies combined is about 45% of the awards on the year. So really speaks to the success of these companies. And, and just saying, his staff created the very festive photo, so I warned them ahead of time. But in closing, I really want to recognize our Director, Mr. Armandades, and all of his staff there, as festive as they are for this holiday meeting. But a shout out and a thank you to all the important work that they do. And with that, that concludes my presentation. So happy to take any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Section 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.1 will be discussed after executive session. Item 1.9.2, Discussion and Take Possible Action Regarding the Upcoming Board of Trustees Meeting Dates for January, February, March, April, and May 2026.
Chair Hagerty and members of the board, our January meeting is scheduled on the 28th, and that is good to go. I have a TAC meeting on the 21st. In order to shorten this, I will send out, I'll send to the board a poll to see what works for each of the respective board members for February, March, and April. We'll send that out to each of you. Thank you.
So no action?
No action.
Section 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasurers Report. Item 1.10.1.1, August 31, 2025 Financial Statements. Item 1.10.1.2, September 30, 2025 Financial Statements. No action is required. Item 1.10.2, President's Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. William Serrata, College President, will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at El Paso Community College.
Good evening, Chair Hagerty, members of the board. I'll begin my report by congratulating the cross-country teams who recently wrapped up a strong 2025 season at both the NJCAA Cross Country and Half Marathon National Championships, which were held in Fort Dodge, Iowa. On the women's side, EPCC earned two All-American honors at the Cross Country Nationals. Freshman Tadi Mavuka finished fifth, and sophomore Antonia Rono finished 11th, earning All-American status for the second time in her EPCC career. The women finished fourth overall. In the Half Marathon Nationals, a few days later, the women again finished fourth, just one point shy of third place, with Tadi and Antonia leading the team, followed by Hannah Martinez. For the men, EPCC finished 22nd at the Cross Country Nationals and improved to 12th at the Half Marathon. They were led by sophomore Julian Guerra in both races, along with strong performances from Aiden Lugum, Gustavo Salazar, and Brian Hernandez. This season, the EPCC women's team was ranked third in the nation, and the men's team was ranked 20th. We're proud of our student athletes and coaches for representing the college so well on the national stage. Saturday, November 8th was the National First Generation College Day, a day recognizing students whose parents did not complete a baccalaureate degree. To mark the occasion, our Trio Student Support Services Program and Student Parent Resource Centers partnered with Northwestern Mutual to host a financial literacy workshop at the Valle Verde Campus. The workshop, led by financial representatives Darius Brown and Angelique Lopez, provided first-generation students with practical tools for budgeting, managing college expenses, and planning for their financial future. Students also shared their experiences. One trio participant, Daniela Aranda, said she is proud to be a first-generation student because her journey is a tribute to the courage and perseverance of her parents. Trio Program Manager Mirela Pacias encouraged students to take advantage of the many campus resources designed to support their success. We're proud to celebrate and support our first-generation students and the programs that serve them. The college has been awarded the 2025 Gold Veterans Education Excellence Recognition Award, or VIRA, by the Texas Veteran Commission, Veterans Commission. This is the highest level of recognition offered through the program, marking the first time EPCC has received this honor. We're one of only 33 public institutions in Texas recognized this year. The award highlights our strong commitment to serving veterans, service members, and their families, not only through academic programs, but through the comprehensive support offered by our Veterans Resource Centers. Dr. Paula Mitchell noted that when the Veteran Resource Centers moved under her leadership, it was without staff and was temporarily closed under the leadership of retired Sergeant Major Carl Dwyer. The center was rebuilt, services expanded, and outreach strengthened. She shared how proud she is that the team earned gold-level recognition on their first application. Director Carl Dwyer emphasized that this award reflects the dedication of EPCC's faculty and staff, and especially the work of the VRC staff. Their personnel experience and commitment ensure our military-affiliated students receive meaningful support and a strong sense of community. The gold award will now be displayed on EPCC's website and materials, and formal recognition will take place at the TAC VPO Conference in March 2026. We're proud of this achievement and thank Dr. Mitchell and Mr. Dwyer and their team for making this possible. On October 29th and 30th, EPCC's Vocational Nursing Program at the Mission de El Paso Campus completed its scheduled six-year site visit from the Texas Board of Nursing. I'm pleased to report that the visit was a success. The surveyors highlighted the dedication of our faculty and staff, the supportive learning environment, and the professionalism of our students. There are no follow-up requirements or corrective actions needed, which is a strong affirmation of the program's quality and the work being done on campus. Congratulations to our faculty and staff on their outstanding work and the dedication to our program and the students they serve. Special thanks and appreciation to Dr. Hafid Geretto, our Dean of Nursing, for his leadership and continued commitment to excellence, which played a key role in this achievement. The Dance Department is honored to invite the community to attend their upcoming production, Silver Sun. This event will showcase the creativity and dedication of our talented performers, promising an inspiring experience for all who attend. The performances will take place at the EPCC Trans Mountain Forum Theater on Thursday, December 4th, and Friday, December 5th at 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday, December 6th at 2:00 p.m. Admissions is $5 for EPCC employees and students, and $10 for the general public. The Language Institute hosted several events in November, and additional celebrations are planned for December. On November 17th, staff participated in the roundup at Canatio High School, where they shared information about the institute's programs. On November 26th, the institute held a Thanksgiving Pie giveaway for students. This December, two ceremonies will recognize students who have completed the intensive English program, with a total of 55 students prepared to matriculate into credit courses or transition into the workforce with newly enhanced skills. Congratulations to our faculty and staff who support our students' goals to learn another language. EPCC earned multiple honors at the 2025 National Council for Marketing and Public Relations Region Four Medallion Awards, including a silver medallion for its bilingual television commercial, Where I Belong. The ad produced by EPCC Mass Communication Professor Lisa Elliott and Adjunct Instructor Michael Head portrays a young boy inspired by his mother's return to college, emphasizing inclusivity, sorry, and support for student parents. Professor Elliott highlighted the project's goal of creating a welcoming tone for families on campus. The collaboration reflects EPCC's commitment to storytelling that resonates with diverse audiences and strengthens community engagement. The recognition underscores Ms. Elliott's leadership in crafting impactful media that align with EPCC's mission to empower students and families. The Opportunity High School Diploma Project at EPCC officially launched with a community partner, Lunch &amp; Learn, on October 29th. This program offers adult learners the opportunity to earn a state-recognized diploma while completing career-focused credentials. We are one of only five community colleges in Texas to offer the program. EPCC aims to strengthen both educational access and workforce readiness, led by Dean Daniel Guerra. The program integrates flexible career and technical education pathways and will begin awarding scholarships beginning in spring 2026. The institution's leaders emphasize the program's historic significance and its potential to empower adult learners while supporting regional economic growth. Thank you, Dean Guerra, for your leadership, oversight, and great work behind this project. Special thanks to Chef Santiago Reyes, our culinary arts students, Dr. Kerry Mo and Dr. Stephen Smith for their work and assistance in hosting our community partners. The music faculty hosted their Faculty Grand on Friday, November 14th at the Valle Verde Campus. This event showcases the extraordinary talents of our music faculty with a fun-filled concert and supportive student scholarships. Special thanks to our faculty, including Daniel Becker, Dr. Alina Vasquez, Armin Harrison, Dr. Melissa Gurola, and Dr. Yasmin Floris. Tomorrow evening, our students will perform at the Valle Verde Campus at 5:00 p.m. as part of the culmination of their Fall 2025 Music and Audio Production coursework. The theater program proudly showcased its fall production, A Doll's House, giving students a meaningful opportunity to engage in hands-on experiential learning through one of the theater's most enduring works. Under the direction of Theater Director Ted Carver Jr., students brought Henrik Ibsen's classic drama to life, grappling with themes of love, independence, and identity while developing their artistic, technical, and collaborative skills. The production, which ran from November 14th through November 23rd, welcomed the community to experience students' hard work and creative achievements while strengthening EPCC's connection to the broader arts community. The Philosophy Discipline Annual Philosophy Career Day was held on Wednesday, November 5th at the Trans Mountain Campus and drew over 160 students in attendance. The event was part of EPCC's Quality Enhancement Plan, which aims to enhance student success through increased communication, ongoing career exploration, and student ownership of their academic and career paths. EPCC's philosophy faculty presented the courses offered at EPCC, the different degrees students can earn beyond their associate's degree, and the various professions they can pursue with a philosophy degree. Representatives from EPCC Career and Transfer Services, as well as UTEP, NMSU, and Sol Ross State University were also present. Congratulations to everyone on a great event. That concludes my report. Chair Hagerty, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Serrata?
No.
Well, the next item, though.
Item 1.11, Consent Docket, There Is None. Section 2, Administration. Item 2.1, 106 Tasby Legal Policies for Information Only, No Action Is Required. Section 3, Personnel. Item 3.1, Information Items. Institutionally, externally funded full-time staff and faculty appointments, extensions, resignations, and retirements, No Action Is Required. Item 3.2, Tenured Track Faculty Appointments and New Tenured Faculty.
Need a motion on that one?
Yes.
I hear a motion on 3.2.
Motion to approve.
May I second?
Any discussion? Call a question, though.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Ms. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Ms. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 4, Financial Services. Item 4.1, Discussion and Action to Approve an Increase to Weaver and Tidwell LLP's Contract for Providing Additional Internal Audit Services to El Paso Community College in the amount of $46,000, additional amount to previously approved $75,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Ms. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Ms. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
On item 4.2, Chair Hagerty, we have Ms. Maria Orvina and her colleague, who will provide a presentation before Bell reads the motion for the board's consideration. Ms. Orvina, thank you. We had an unexpectedly large number of retirees, so thank you and your colleague.
No, thank you.
For holding out for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Hagerty, board members. Dr. Serrata, for the record, my name is Maria Orvina with Hilltop Securities, municipal advisors for the district. And with me is also Mr. Ivan Alvarado, who is a part of my office here in El Paso. And with us as well is Mr. Paul Braden, who is Bond Counsel for the district. And so tonight, we're here to discuss an item that we brought to you back in November. I understand there's some board members that were not present at that meeting, so we're going to go ahead and cover that presentation again, just to make sure that we answer any questions that they may have. And in addition, we'll provide you with some additional options as requested by Ms. Dr. Serrata. So with that, I am going to go ahead and get started. All right. And just for the audience, obviously, you know, one of the basic fundamental things that we look at is municipal debt financing. And issuers such as the college have access to municipal bonds when you need to find And issuers such as the college have access to municipal bonds when you need to finance big projects. And all it is, it's a debt obligation. You pay principal and interest, very much like a loan. Now, the two things that typically you use bonds for are, number one, you issue bonds for public infrastructure, essential buildings, or public utilities. Back in 2016, the college issued some bonds for the rehabilitation and for some of the essential buildings for the college. Now, typically, these buildings, well, typically, the debt is issued between 20, 25, or 30 years. Now, the second component of the bonds is the refinancings. As I mentioned last time, refinancings are just what they sound like. So if there's an opportunity in the market to lower your interest rates, we try to capture that. And so that is why we're here today, to discuss a potential saving opportunity by the college if we refund some bonds. So I'm going to go ahead and turn to the next page. So you can see on this particular page, right now, there's only one bond issue outstanding. It's the 2016 series, and we have a principal outstanding of $105.1 million. You have interest rates that you're paying between 3 and 1/8 and 5 and 1/4. We have a call date of April 1st of 2026, and a final maturity, as you can see in the chart right below, of 2042. Right now, the college is paying about $9.1 million. So what we're looking at is to lower those payments with the refunding of these bonds. So on the next slide, you'll see three options that we're going to be covering tonight. The first option is the one that we covered at the meeting in November, which is just a straight current refunding of your bonds with no equity contribution and just average-level savings. And you will be able to see a little bit more of the details here shortly. Option 2, this is the option where we assume everything that we assumed in option 1 with the addition now of $20 million of an equity contribution, okay? And then option number 3 is just doing something a little bit different, where we're going to structure your savings in a different format to shorten the life of the bonds, okay? So we are going to the bottom half of that slide. The key assumption that I want to mention here is that we used interest rates as of last week. We use AA+ AA, which is what your credit rating is at this time. All right, so here in this slide, and I'm going to refer to my spreadsheet here. So you'll see on the left column, which is highlighted in orange, these are your existing debt service payments. So right now, the college is paying $9.1 million of debt for the 2016 bonds. Now, option 1, remember, this is just a straight refunding of your bonds. And so basically, what we would do with current market conditions, we were looking at refunding at about 3.75 true interest cost, which is the estimated borrowing cost. So that means that we could lower your debt service payments to about 8.5 million, saving you about $573,000 a year, okay? So all in all, you would be saving about $9.2 million over the life of the bonds. Now, the net present value on this particular scenario is roughly about 6.7, yes, about 6.70%. Now, option 2 is almost exactly what option 1 is. But again, we're going to assume that you have 20 million to contribute to your refunding. And so what does this do to the bonds and to the refunding? So you'll see, you're still paying $9.1 million today. If we contribute $20 million, then that would bring down your debt to about $6.8 million a year, basically saving about $2.3 million a year, okay? So all in all, your overall savings would be about $37.5 million. That translates to a net present value percentage of 670. And it's important for me to bring that up, because it's going to be important for another slide at the end of this presentation. So that's that scenario. And then option 3, which is the option that was requested by Dr. Sarata. And this is the option where we look at using the $20 million and actually shortening the life of the bonds. So you'll see right here on this new refunding debt service. So we would take you from $9.1 million to about $8.8 million, okay? So for the next about 10, 11 years, you would be saving or lowering your debt service about $260,000 a year. However, you would be shortening the life of the bonds and saving about $9 million of debt per year over those five years. So that translates to about $48.1 million of savings, which is about 10.83%. So in summary, okay, the option 3 is the most advantageous if obviously the college decided to contribute $20 million. Option 1 and 2 are very similar in the sense of the net present value percentage. However, option 2, what it does do is lowers your average overall payment by about $2.3 million, okay? So that's really, I think, from the best to the middle to the lowest best scenario. I wouldn't call it worst-case scenario, because it's a really good scenario. Either one of these would be a great scenario for the college. All right, so let me just move on then to the next slide. So what we want to do here today is, if the board does want to move forward with the refunding, then we would request a parameters authorization through a resolution, okay? And so this resolution would set forth the pricing officers and the parameters that your financing team can actually go and execute. If we can't find the, if we can't meet the parameters, then we will not execute on this transaction. We do this because we want to make sure we can go into the market at the optimum time and we can get the best structure, okay? So that's why we're requesting a parameters authorization. So the pricing officers in this case would be your leadership team, would be the board president, I'm sorry, the president. Then we would have the vice president, Finance Administration CFO. Those individuals would be responsible for making sure that we meet your parameters. Now, I'm going to read the parameters, just so you know what it is that we're looking at and what it is that we're going to attempt to stay within by the time we price your bonds. So the par amount, okay, of the bonds cannot exceed $103,910,000. That would be the maximum. We would have to stay below in order to price these bonds. The minimum present value savings, no less than 3%. The maximum, and remember, we're about anywhere from 6% to 10%, depending on whatever option. And so that is a really good percentage. And then maximum true interest cost of 475. We're about 275, I'm sorry, let me see. We're about 375, I apologize. In the scenario, I'm sorry, let me just show you. Of course, I missed my spot. Could someone in IT give me a hand? Sorry. This is new to me. Is IT, okay. Bernie, could you give me a hand?
I can.
Yes, I may.
Okay, so somebody. All right, so I need to get back to slide 6. Yes, please. Yeah, they went over, yeah, slide 6. So that's 4, and if they can go two more, that would be great. Yes, right here. So as you can see, the estimated at the bottom of option 1 and 2, that's 375. So we add 100 basis points. That's how we came up with 475, okay? All right, and so final maturity date, April 1st of 2042, and that is just the maximum. This debt will not be stretched out. It's exactly the last maturity of the 2016 bonds. And then the expiration of the delegated authority, 365 days. We don't expect to use that, you know, 360-day allotment, but we definitely want to have enough time in the event that we need to pull the item because of market conditions. Again, if we can't meet these parameters, we will not be pricing these bonds. Now, the next thing that I want to talk about real briefly here is timing. And right now, we've been working very closely with your leadership. We've been working on getting the documentation ready to go and market your bonds. So we've been preparing the preliminary official statement, which is a very comprehensive document that has everything that you want to know about the district, okay? And so we're putting that together. And then the other thing that we've been doing over the last eight weeks, and I do have to really, you know, I have to say that your staff has been working very hard. We have been meeting and actually discussing the selection of the underwriters. They have been looking at presentations. They've been communicating through email, through teams, in-person visits over the last eight weeks to make sure that any underwriter that has been presenting information to the county, to the college, in terms of this refunding gets reviewed. And so we have done that, and so, let's see. And so I wanted to briefly state right here, this is the consulting team. So if you can look at the bottom, right there where it's the Underwriter Syndicate, the selection group team actually selected the following. So for your lead underwriter, it would be RBC Capital Markets as the lead, Cabrera Capital Markets as a co-manager, Jeffries and Ramirez as co-managers as well. So it'd be a four-handed team. So this is the team that was selected by your leadership team. Can we go back? I'm sorry, IT, if you can help me again to slide 8? 8, sorry. That's 10. If 2, 2 up, yes, right there. Okay, and so that was the Underwriter Syndicate. Now, what we're going to be doing, obviously, this is the month of December. Tonight, we're obviously having a formal presentation with the board to have this considered. If approved, then we would move forward with, you know, the rating agency meetings, which will be here in the next couple of weeks. And we will also have underwriter diligence calls. Now, let me tell you, rating agency meetings are very, very hard. There is a lot of information, and your team is going to be preparing a lot of information that is going to give them everything that they need to know about the governance, the management, and the finances of the district. And so I just want to definitely give everyone here, not only the board but staff, kudos, because you are one of the highest-rated entities in El Paso County, okay? You are a AA+ by Standard and Poor's and a AA by Fitch. So I want to congratulate you about that, because not a lot of entities in the county have that credit rating. So it really is a testament to your work and to the work of your staff, okay? So we will be doing that in the month of December. We will break for, you know, the holidays. And we will come back in January. We will finalize the official statement. We will market the bonds with your underwriter syndicates, and then we will price sometime in the mid-January timeframe. So after that, in February, we would be looking to close on these bonds. And I think that pretty much concludes the presentation. In case anybody has any questions about anything that I've discussed or anything market-wise, I'm happy to discuss at this point.
I have one question. If we do this refinance, and how long do we have before we have a chance, if interest goes further down, to refinance? Do we have to wait another 10 years before we can refinance, or we can do it?
To, if you refund these bonds, it could take another nine years. Because, so going back to the scenario, so every time you issue bonds, say it's whether it's 10, 20, 15 years, we have either a nine- or 10-year call. So we lock that up for about nine to 10 years, and then that's when you have your opportunity to re-refund these bonds if the market is primed to, if the market is there.
35, then?
I'm sorry?
2035.
That's right. That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I will say as well, so the options that I went over tonight, we do not need to make a determination unless, you know, that is something that the board would like to discuss with Dr. Sarata. But that's something that we'll have the ability to execute once we're ready to do so. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I have a motion to accept this, or anybody have any other questions for this? I have a motion to. I have to have a motion.
You've got to have a motion, but I believe that there's a companion resolution that was passed out to the board.
Is this discussion in action? Don't we have to vote on it?
Yes, you would.
To accept the resolution is what?
Yes, to accept the resolution as proposed.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Section 5, Physical Facilities. Item 5.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval to Award a Contract to Ara Contractors LLC for Services Related to the Updating of Shared Spaces and Offices at the Valle Verde Campus A Building in an Amount Not to Exceed $4,493,113. Mr. Exer made the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 6, Curriculum and Instruction. Item 6.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval of the New Level 1 Certificate of Completion in Film and Multimedia Production Program in the Amount of $87,643.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Item 6.2, Discussion and Action on the Approval of a Cooperative Agreement from the University of Texas at San Antonio in the amount of $65,489.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 7, Student Services. Item 7.1, Discussion and Action on the Approval of Continuing Education CE Tuition Rates for New Courses.
I have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Section 8, Community Services, there is none. Would the board like to go into executive session? Item 1.3, Executive in Closed Session. The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. One, consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice, or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or for any purpose authorized by law. Two, discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Three, discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Four, consideration of specific personnel matters. Five, discussion about security, personnel, or devices. Or six, discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Item 1.3.1, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding the Proposed Contract Termination of an Employee in the Division of Instruction and Workforce Education pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Item 1.3.2, Discussion with Legal Counsel Regarding Proposed Development at 105 E Rio Grande pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now 6:07, and the board is in executive session.
Okay, we're back out of executive session. We have a few more items that we have to cover. And I believe it's going to be, is it 9.1?
Item 1.9.1, Discussion and Take Possible Action Regarding the Proposed Contract Termination of an Employee in the Division of Instruction and Workforce Education.
For the reason discussed with legal counsel, I move to approve the proposed midterm contract termination of Ezekiel Gutierrez for good cause, and move to authorize the college president to give notice of contract termination upon pending expiration of the to give notice of contract termination upon pending expiration of the 10-day appeal period set forth in policy DMAA local.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question, Bill.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mrs. Roblis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahida.
Aye.
Mr. Mendez.
Aye.
Mrs. Moy.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
And then our next board meeting is going to be in January on the 28th at 4:30 in this very room. And we are now adjourned.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you all.
Thank you. That was quick.